Welcome to the New Kent County Planning Commission Meeting, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. At this moment, if we all could stand for a moment of silence, and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ms. Townsend?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Mr. Dabrowski? Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Laurichelle?
Here.
Dr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Here.
Reverend Hathaway?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
And we have a quorum. Now on to the approval of the minutes for the August eighteenth, eighteenth meeting. Does anyone have any revisions?
Mr. Chairman, if I hear no changes need to be made, I'd like to make a motion we accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Rutter, could you please, both the Commissioners?
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Laurichelle?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. The minutes are approved for August eighteenth. Now, citizen comment period? Let me check if we have any, anybody signed up. No, no one's signed up, so moving on to the next portion of the meeting, presentations? No presentations, staff? Unfinished business? No unfinished business, we're moving right along. Now on to new business. We do have consideration of PC seventeen twenty-five, an exception request made by Alex Wells on behalf of C Store Developer LLC from Section ninety-eight dash one oh six nine B three of the county code. Mr. Silva?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Michael. Thank you, sir. Alrighty. So, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name is Patrick Silva, Principal Planner with the Department of Community Development's Planning Division. As Mr. Chair said, here this evening to provide an overview of the Commerce Corridor Overlay District Design Requirement Exception submitted by Mr. Wells to waive the Commerce Corridor Overlay Requirements established by Section ninety-eight dash ten sixty-nine B three. So, this specific requirement limits signage for individual uses within the bounds of the Commerce Corridor Overlay that are not located in a shopping center, office building, or complex, or commercial complex, to no more than fifty square feet in area and eight feet in height. So, as is described up here, the, the specific request is related to a site plan that has been submitted with the county and is currently under review relating to the proposed construction of a new Wawa automobile fueling station and convenience store located in Lenexa at the intersection of Stage Road and Route thirty-three. The site is located within the boundaries of the Commerce Corridor Overlay District, which extend five hundred feet outwards from Route thirty-three. As part of the project scope, the applicant does wish to install a freestanding monument sign, which pursuant to Section ninety-eight dash ten sixty-nine B three of the county code, again, is limited to fifty square feet in sign area and eight feet in height. The applicant is requesting an exception from this requirement in order to allow the proposed sign to instead include an area of eighty-four point five square feet and twenty-five feet in sign height. So, for some quick context on the sign regulations, you know, to kind of illustrate what is normally allowed by the zoning of this parcel versus what is further restricted by the Commerce Corridor Overlay Zone, the Economic Opportunity Zone allows usually for freestanding monument signs in relation to a specific site to contain a sign area of up to a hundred and fifty square feet and a sign height of up to twenty-five feet in height. So, the applicant requested eighty-four and a half square feet and twenty-five feet in height would normally be permissible but, uh, under the Economic Opportunity Zoning Regulations in our sign ordinance, but again, it's the additional restrictions of the Commerce Corridor that necessitate the exception tonight. And then, here's a little image of the sign that's being proposed. As you can see, the majority of the requested sign area would be the fifty-three and a half square feet that make up the pricing portion, while the remaining thirty-some-odd square feet make up the sort of Wawa branding portion at the top of the freestanding monument sign. So, really, this is kind of typical of what you would see for automobile fueling stations along commercial corridors. So, in staff's consideration of the request, staff did find that the requested, uh, the requested exception would comply with the findings necessary to grant such an exception, as are articulated in Section ninety-eight dash ten seventy-one of the county code. So, furthermore, staff found that specifically a slightly larger and taller sign was appropriate, given the site context, as site visibility would be improved for customers traveling on Route thirty-three and allow them more time to safely prepare to enter the site. You know, based on the proposed configuration of the site plan in this specific parcel's context, you really won't see the, um, the building from a long ways out as you approach the site, so visibility of the sign itself can, hey, uh, would assist in folks, you know, sort of safely navigating to enter that site there. In addition, staff found that, given, again, the proposed signs, uh, sign size and height would otherwise be permitted in the Economic Opportunity Zone, absent the requirements of the Commerce Corridor Overlay District, and that similar businesses in the vicinity, for example, an adjacent BP, have existing signs of a similar height and sign area. Given that context, staff did feel that in addition, with all the other sort of findings necessary to grant an exception being met, for the reasons I just stated, we, staff felt comfortable with supporting the exception that was requested by the applicant. So, in conclusion, by reconciling the reasons for the exception stated by the applicant in their request letter, as well as staff's consideration of the request, and their, their finding that the exception findings stated in the county code were met, again, staff is recommending approval of the exception request before you this evening. I would also want to take a moment to mention that we do have some folks representing the applicant team that are here tonight, just in case the commission has any questions for them. But otherwise, I'm happy to, happy to answer any questions you might have for staff.
Thank you, Ms. Silva. Any Commissioners have any questions for staff or the applicant?
Mr. Silva?
Yes, ma'am.
They, uh, so the actual sign, if it was permitted, would be consistent with additional signs that were already built from the other gas station? They would all be sort of the same structure, same type?
That's correct. And I, I would mention that is one of the specific findings that's articulated in Section ninety-eight dash ten seventy-one that needs to be met in order to grant such an exception, that the requested exception would render whatever the, the proposed use is, you know, consistent with what similar uses might abut it or, or be located in the nearby vicinity.
So, would there be comments on the adjoining neighbors?
No, sir.
Mr. Silva, would the erection of this sign preclude any additional signage or marquees for this site?
It would preclude any additional freestanding signs. You know, facade signage, for example, kind of is regulated separately by the sign ordinance, but certainly, this would preclude any additional freestanding signs at the site.
And that would include on Stage Road, any signs on Stage Road?
That's correct. It would be for the, the site itself, not based on, you know, frontage. If it were a corner lot and had two, um, two points of frontage, for example, that wouldn't allow them to have two signs.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What was the original intent for the Commerce Corridor Overlay District? Why was that, why was that adopted and added into the, into the code?
That's a great question. If you kind of take the, you know, intent language of the county code that establishes the district, at face value, it really speaks to wanting to ensure there is a desirable and consistent aesthetic quality to our main commercial corridors. And, you know, kind of promoting the use of materials that are, you know, either, A, considered to be more aesthetically pleasing, or of higher quality than what might compare, you know, compared to something that might be the cheapest option, for example. So, that's really the main intent of those specific design requirements.
Okay. And the reason for my question, obviously, I understand as existing gas stations there that pre, preceded the Commerce Corridor Overlay District being implemented, and, you know, approving this, then the next one comes in, and the next one comes in. So, how will we ever achieve the intent of that district if waivers are, are granted one after another?
That's a great question, and I think that is a kind of core consideration that y'all, as the Planning Commissioners, need to take into account when, you know, considering exceptions like these. You know, really, the way that the exception criteria is worded is that, you know, if they meet the findings that I was mentioning, which I'll kind of pull up quickly here, you know, then the, really, the, the code doesn't speak to the need for hardship or, or anything like that. It's, it is kind of open to interpretation. So, you know, that certainly is, is something that's come up in conversation with Commissioners and staff before. You know, there obviously does need to be some sort of line drawn to make sure that, at the end of the day, we are applying the regulations in such a way that would achieve the spirit of what they're meant to achieve. But, you know, in staff's opinion, again, in reconciling what the request the applicant has made is with these findings necessary in order to grant such an exception, staff did feel comfortable that these were being met, based on the way that the code's currently written.
And everything else associated with this project complies, building material design, everything else complies with their requirements?
Yes. The, um, nothing submitted as part of the site plan was flagged to staff as needing additional relief from the requirements of the Commerce Corridor Overlay. And certainly, the applicant hasn't indicated us the need for further relief from these requirements.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Silva, the, that, that corridor overlay is very long, correct? I mean, it, it goes the whole way into, into, um, into El, into Eltham.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm assuming that the, the lower signage was really, um, thought, thought about for the, where, where there's a concentration of, of businesses and, and other, other housing in, more in, within Eltham?
I, you know, it's tough for me to say what the original thought was behind this specific criteria. I, I would imagine that was certainly a consideration, and I think within your question is definitely a good point, that it is tough to have a one-size-fits-all set of regulations that perfectly captures the needs and configuration of every site that might, might fall within the bounds of the Commerce Corridor, which is really why these exceptions exist, or this Avenue Four exception exists. I, I would imagine that was probably a consideration behind this specific, you know, beyond sort of ensuring that there is, uh, for lack of a better, better turn of phrase, like a gaudy arrangement of enormous signs one after the another. I would not be surprised to, to, to see that that was a consideration as well, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Goodness.
My initial thoughts were similar to theirs, that perhaps we may need to go back and revisit that overlay district, because I do see some long-term problems with that.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, that, those are certainly discussions. I, I would be inclined to say that staff would agree with that, and that's certainly something we're planning to take a closer look at as part of the upcoming development ordinance rewrite as well. Kind of looking at the frequency of requests, type of requests that we've gotten for exceptions, and seeing if there's anything we can do to strengthen or refine the regulations of the specific code section. But staff would be inclined to agree, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Silva, I posed this question before. I don't know if you have an answer for it today or not. How many applications have there been for an exception request of the Commerce Corridor Overlay District criteria versus the total number of applications in the Commerce Corridor Overlay District?
That is a great question. I do not have the answer for, so you're, you're specifically asking the number of, let's say, site plans for development within the bounds of the Commerce Corridor District compared with how many exception requests there have been in the time that the regulations have existed?
And I'm not asking for a specific number tonight, per se, but it seems to me that this commission has considered several exceptions here in the recent history. And I'm not opposed to, to tonight's application. What I'm trying to do is, similar to Reverend Hathaway, is yeah, in, in Mr. Agaray, Araghi, it's also mentioned that we will consider this when we look at the language of the ordinances, but it seems like this is one ordinance that we really need to pay hard attention to and reconsideration of structure and foundation, and how it is to be interpreted and applied.
Understood.
Especially if we have a numerous number of applications for exceptions, and they're being approved versus the number of total applications. If it's a high percentage, or even twenty-five percent, then something may be a little awry.
Understood. Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Moyer?
A, a number of the ones that we've needed approved in the last year or so has been county property. We had to get a, a conditional use permit, or we had to get an ordinance change for the fire station number six.
Right, for the bay doors, yeah.
Um, we had to do a few things like that. We had to do the one up in Eltham, where the guy's business is just a little bit different.
Right.
Yeah. I, I think if you go back to the original overlay district, which was just sixty.
Right.
The idea is, and, and I'll tell this story, you know, I, I talked to a supervisor over at Charles City, and I said, "My people don't want sixty to look like Mechanicsville Turnpike."
Sure.
And what he said to me is, "My people don't want Charles City to look like New Kent." So, i- if, if you look at the, the concept of, of relativity, you know, that, that's what we were looking at. And so, when it passed, it, you know, Waffle House came, they got in, their site plan was before it passed, but they went with the monument sign. We weren't, not we, while we were, I was on plan, because, um, we didn't catch Dollar General in time. Of course, the sign for Food Lion had already been there for ages, okay? But one of the things that was the important part of the overlay district, if somebody changes their facade, they change their signage, that's where you're gonna have to get the approval. So, for, for this, if, if that would be approved, that sign for Wawa, and BP wants to put another sign up, well, they'd have to go through the same process. Their grandfather ended what they have.
That's right.
But not what they got. And, and there were, there's a number of businesses in the county that we would rather not them look like that. So, if they do any changes, we want to make sure it's done correctly. And, and that's kind of the overlay district and theme, that we are not a, a bunch of different height sizes, facades, and everything. Everything looks somewhat.
Right.
Um, we, we didn't get, get it done too well on Route sixty, so that's why they wanted to go to forty-nine and thirty, you know, to make it, you know, maybe work that way. But that's some of the history on, uh, on the overlay district. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not real familiar with Wawa's, but do Wawa's have individual businesses inside of the gas station? So, like, for instance, if it had a fast food thing, would they come into this monument and advertise their little, little restaurant, or the fast food?
So, the, the folks from Wawa might be able to better speak to that, but my understanding is no, they do not typically have other businesses within their establishments. As, as a lover of their hoagies, they, they do a pretty good, pretty good food business themselves.
So, the area that's underneath the monument would always be open? So, you, you won't be able to, you don't add anything else into the monument?
Uh, certainly. And, you know, if, if the, the sign that has been proposed were to be approved as part of this exception, you know, any increase in area, whether or not it was advertising a different tenant, would also need to have further, you know, it would also need to go through this same exception process. So, it's not like they've been granted the exception, and then they can make all the changes they want, up to a hundred and fifty square feet or whatever. You know, a, any changes to what has been, you know, if the commission were to recommend this for approval, any further changes to increase sign area would also require this, you know, exception approval.
Mr. Chair, one more thing. Could I have somebody from Wawa explain what a Wawa, Wawa fly-through is? I, I'm from Pennsylvania, okay? We're from Pennsylvania. We, we love Wawa, but I've never seen a fly-through, you know? So, somebody got that?
State, state is coming in.
I, I don't, I, I gather this is a drive-in, but let me know.
Hey, yeah, appreciate the question. My name's Robbie Lester. I am the real estate representative for Wawa, for the state of Virginia, most of the state of Virginia. The fly-through is a, is a new concept for Wawa. We actually don't have any stores currently open with a fly-through. But, given the proliferation of people using apps and online ordering of food, I mean, it's really changing a lot of businesses. I, I don't know if you've seen it. I think Chipotle does it. There's, there's a few other restaurants that will do it. But essentially, it's just a pickup window. So, you order your food online, and it's, it's ready, and you can do that now, you know, today, you can do that, but you have to walk into the store and, and, you know, pick up the bag off of a rack or whatever. Now, people will just be able to drive through, pick it up out of a, a, a window, and keep going. So, there's no order board, there's no waiting for preparation of food. The intent is it's already ready, it's just, they're just circulating through, picking it up. It just makes it, it's just one more, uh, you know, addition to, it's called a convenience store, and it's just making it that much more convenient.
So, that's the theme of the geese, I guess?
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, exactly. So, you have to play on, play on the, play on words there. But thank you for the question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Reverend, go ahead.
As a lover of Wawa's, that has EV stations, will you have any EV stations?
Sure, electric charge.
Yeah, all, all of our sites these days are EV-ready.
Okay.
Okay? So, we, we plan for the future. It really comes down to get the EV provider, whether it's Tesla or some other EV provider contracts with us to put EV stations at the site. But if that, if that does happen, the site is ready to, I'm just saying.
That would be the critical need in New Kent, because I'm seeing more and more Teslas.
And, Mr. Silva?
Yes, sir.
Also, for the applicants, is this a standard size sign for you? Okay. So, you really have many adjustments for us? It's just, this is standard that you use?
Yeah, it's pretty standard, and we actually looked at, at your, the underlying sign ordinance, and, and looked at, we really designed it to fit that underlying sign ordinance, and, and looking at the other signs that were in the border. Okay, this is consistent with what's here, this is consistent with what they're allowing, you know, areas of the county outside of the overlay district. And so, that was really the, the basis that's used for the, uh, sign design.
Yeah, thank you. And, and also to, I guess, to reiterate, Mr. Laurichelle speaking about, I think this is gonna be precedent-setting, but at the same time, I'm not opposed to this. I don't find this, the size of this sign, I don't have any problems with it. But I do think that, and I know we will, we keep talking about, we're gonna, when we get to the point where we do a rewrite on these zoning ordinances. But there is a dis, I think there's a disconnect between, especially EO and Commerce Corridor. They should be more married together, I would think. So, I, I know that's something we will look at at a point in time, but, and again, I, certainly, we, we are very welcoming to Wawa. We'd like to, to see them show up on Route thirty-three, closer to the Barrensville area, so. And that's all the questions I have, Mr. Silva. Any other Commissioners have any other questions?
You're just hungry for a closer.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to do that. In order to address and protect and promote public convenience and necessity and general welfare in the good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt Resolution Number PC one seven dash two five to forward the exception requests made by Alex Wells on behalf of C Store Developers LLC to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Rutter, could you please poll the members?
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Abstain.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Laurichelle?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Ms. Rose? Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, public hearings, to which we have none. Chairman's report, I'm not very excited, I don't have anything again this month. Reverend Hathaway, Plan RVA.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Plan RVA changed their meeting, we were scheduled to meet on September 11th, they changed it to the 30th so that we could celebrate the memorial in our localities. But I did have an opportunity along with one of the members of the Housing Advisory Committee to go to Senator Mark Warner's seminar on Keys to Housing Affordability Summit. It was really interesting, I've sent each one of your copies, so you'll have that in your email, but just to highlight a couple of things. One of the things that they referenced is that first-time homebuyers are now averaging around age 38. And if it's that late, it really just affects everything that they're going to be able to do. The median housing costs in New Kent, right now it's about $465,000, but a lot of people are coming from other localities because they find that affordable. And so the emphasis was that there is no lack of affordable housing in New Kent, it's a matter of who can afford it. And so the conversation quickly shifted to attainable workforce housing, and there were some good suggestions on that. So hopefully you get something out of the email I sent. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Now on to commission reports, Mr. LaRochelle.
No, sir.
Ms. Thomas.
No, sir.
Ms. Johnson.
Not at this time.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes. As our conversation from last month, I would like to see us move forward to maybe do a subcommittee to review the buffers zoning ordinance, possibly if it could be maybe three people, if that would work with everybody. I would say maybe we get the ordinances, read it, highlight it, and then we meet together and discuss what we highlighted and see if we can't maybe change some of the terminology in it to be a little bit more easy reading than what it is. But that would be upon your request if you see fit.
Well, and I'll redirect to staff, what kind of timeline are we looking at as far as the rewrite and will there be any type of committees that will be, I guess comprised of either planning commission or even public to work with the vendor, similar like we did with the comp plan update?
So we did receive approval for the RFP today from our legal team, so that should be posted by the end of the week to start accepting proposals. Hopefully, between proposal acceptance, review, negotiation, all that stuff, looking kind of beginning of potentially November to kind of kick that off. As far as stakeholder groups, committees, things like that, obviously the planning commission will have a heavy involvement in that, especially once we kind of have the draft done and throughout that process, you know, y'all will get the full proposed rewrite, both subdivision and zoning, to review, make comment on. I think the plan would be to give that to you guys with ample time to, you know, review that before we bring it to a formal presentation and obviously, you know, time to mull that over, provide comment, things like that before we go to public hearing. There will be some efforts for targeted stakeholder engagement. Again, we haven't obviously selected a consultant, so some of this is still in flux. They have much more experience, you know, across the board doing this, so we'll rely heavily on them to kind of shape what some of that outreach and stakeholder groups look like. You know, if the planning commission wants to make a subcommittee for landscaping to go ahead and start looking at potential recommendations to change, that's at your will. I will say that, you know, from staff's current workload, our staffing downstairs, I don't foresee that being a kind of separate project like the amendments to the accessory structure regulations were earlier this year. Our focus will be on the overall development ordinance rewrite, so it can certainly be had in the context of that, but trying to, you know, balance staff time with other daily workloads, you know, I don't necessarily see that being done ahead of time. But that will be part of the conversation, you know, tied to the overall ordinance rewrite.
And buffers are just part of it. I mean, as far as kind of part and parcel with everything else that we're going to be looking at, so it will be included in the potential rewrite. I don't know if, to me, Ms. Townsend, if we do a subcommittee, maybe not so much do we limit it to buffers, I mean, if we're going to, if we have to look at everything to begin with, or the vendor, and obviously with hopefully some assistance or guidance from staff as well as planning commission members and, I don't know, and again, if the public is involved too. I don't know, should we just limit to buffers as far as what we're looking at? I know it's near and dear to your heart and I appreciate that, but I want to make sure that we, if we're going to be in there, in the weeds, let's get in the weeds with pretty much other aspects of it too. Because it does, I mean, the overall ordinance does need a, to me, a significant rewrite to, again, to mesh better with the other aspects of what we want to do.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question while we're on this topic? What do you foresee the timeline?
So I'm anticipating 18 to 24 months. And that's based on the amount of time that it took for the comp plan from start to finish, you know, from start of the amendment to adoption. You know, obviously, again, kind of targeted stakeholder, looking at different sections, you know, we want to engage with Home Builders Association and Realtors and things like that for some of the residential aspects. We want to engage with commercial developers and real estate brokers on, you know, the EO and industrial aspects. We want to engage with, you know, landscape professionals and those that are involved with that on buffers and landscaping, and we kind of want to marry everything together. I think my hope is to have a more streamlined process than what the comp plan was, which is why I'm saying 18 to 24 months. Again, some of that will be decided with, you know, our selected consultant and kind of what their timeline is. That's part of the proposal is to kind of outline what their expectation is and what they foresee.
And follow up, Ms. Townsend, do you think the subcommittee is more, in your mind, something to offer a template to the vendor or something that identify areas of concern? I guess how deep are you interested in looking into it?
I would say it's more of area of concern, but I mean, it's up to you at the board here as to when you want to look at it. But the fact is, it needs to be looked at, all of it needs to be looked at. So it's however you want to handle it.
Reverend?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Ms. Townsend in this respect. For the planning commission to get involved on the tail end, that's a lot for us to consume in a relatively short period of time. I'd much rather for the commissions to have an opportunity to submit some things they'd like for the committee to look at, so that we're not trying to consume all of this once it's finalized.
I think that's something that we can certainly work into it. You know, obviously, again, I'm shooting from the hip, so to speak, you know, we'll work with the consultant to kind of outline the steps and what, you know, the process is going forward. You know, there's a desire to, for the commission to kind of dissect the existing ordinance and, you know, highlight concerns or gray areas, inconsistencies, whatever it may be, and submit those to staffs, you know, that we can then turn that over to the consultant and work through those if we want to do partial updates rather than waiting till the end. You know, as we finalize sections, or not finalize, but, you know, kind of come to the conclusion of drafting, you know, specific sections of the subdivision ordinance or the zoning ordinance, submit that to you guys for review, we can. Again, it's kind of in flux as we just got approval for the RFP today.
And I think that would be a process that would not necessarily slow you down, but would give us an opportunity to have input.
For what Ms. Townsend is outlining, I think she's outlining like two or three of us meet regularly or so to discuss the issues with the buffers and setbacks and things of that nature. I think it needs to be some kind of structure because technically, we, three of us cannot meet together at one time, where that defines a meeting that needs to be publicized, correct?
I will have to follow up with that.
Well, and I believe in the, I was just looking for the bylaws, but I know we can establish subcommittees and as far as the requirements for advertising, I'm not, I am not certain on that. So with that being said, I think we're.
I don't think it has to be advertised, but.
So let me proffer this then. So in the meantime, if, not making a decision tonight, let's, if, Ms. Townsend, if you can kind of develop a framework of how you foresee this, or you think this should be moving forward as far as how the subcommittee should operate, and then from a staff perspective, we'll see what the requirements of the subcommittee, what, within the bylaws, of what we can do or not do. Certainly, I want to presume something without having to confirm through legal or.
Yeah, and we obviously don't have representation here tonight and I don't have the bylaws in front of me, but we'd be more than happy to look into those and ask those questions to come up with, you know, what's required for the subcommittees and what, you know, advertising minutes, things like that.
And also too, in the meantime, then those other commissioners who may be interested in serving on this subcommittee can kind of think about that and I'm sure Ms. Townsend's going to be on.
As far as I'm concerned though, I mean, if you've got the zoning ordinance sent to you and you have it in your hand, you can just read it and then you highlight whatever questions are on there and then just send it to the planning department so that they have it for future reference when it comes time to look at the buffers and say, hey, our planning commissioner said this, how does that work? You know, some of it might work and some of it might not work.
And that's certainly an option as well. I mean, I know internally, over the course of the last year or so, staff has kind of kept track of gray language and inconsistencies that we've run across. We've also talked to citizens and some community groups that had concerns about different things and we try and track, you know, what those concerns are for that exact reason to use as we get into the development ordinance rewrite. So that is also an option.
So if you did want to do a subcommittee, you could just say, I'm going to send everybody email, I'm going to send you the ordinance, you go home and read it and you can just highlight away, you know, and then whatever your opinions are, or if, even if the language is not acceptable, because some of the language I find that's, it's not readily understood what they're trying to say. So maybe you might want to point some areas out. And then again, when you get your vendors here, this would be some food for thought when they're looking at stuff, because they might not, they might see it, because they see it all the time, it may not make a difference to them. Whereas layman people or just regular, normal people who see it are like, what does that mean? You know, so it might be helpful to them to say, okay, let's sort of, you know, redefine this. Let's say, let's make it a little easier to read.
And that's certainly one of the overarching goals of this process. I mean, we want to, and hopefully, as you guys saw with the accessory structure amendment, you know, we tried to define terms that weren't defined before to provide clarity, and we tried to write it in a way that could be understood by the layperson or, you know, the average homeowner that wants to do an accessory structure or whatever it may be. I mean, that's certainly one of the overarching goals and try to get away from the legalese, so to speak, of kind of old past ordinances.
Well, I guess, and I'm not opposed to the subcommittee again, but it's, I think the subcommittee may offer a little bit of more structure to what we're doing as far as each one of us shooting something to staff, you know, at least might have some, a little bit more organized, or maybe we can sound it off amongst us through the subcommittee before we, you know, everybody sends something to them. I don't want, we don't want to inundate staff as well, especially when it's getting to be the crossover when we do have the vendor and they're already working on those. I mean, we certainly know how long and how heavily involved just from the comp plan update that is, and this is going to be no less of a task either.
Well, Mr. Chairman, couldn't we just do it the same way? Everybody go and read the ordinance and then bring it back and we'll have a discussion at one of our next planning meetings? And then we can each voice our opinion on something that may need to be changed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to tie the staff's hands down, because I know that this is going to be a major task. Buffers are really important, but I don't think that's the only thing. And I can tell you, there's some other things in the ordinance that many of us are passionate about. So rather than tie your hands down, I would like for us to just look at the ordinance and say, are there any key things, any big-ticket things that we would like the staff to look at? That way, we're not tying your hands down, but at least we're putting it on the table to say, this is something we're concerned about.
And we're not looking for the answer, we're just drawing the attention to the issue.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I mean, if we decide to go that route, I mean, you can certainly just send those emails and correspondence to planning. Obviously, we'll be working closely with the consultant on the ordinance rewrite. You know, I like that approach personally. You know, there's a lot of different things that are going to have to be kind of married and make sure that they jive as we go through this process. I mean, even tonight, we saw, you know, EO sign requirements versus Commerce Corridor overlay requirements for signs. And I think those things are all things that need to be considered and those kind of overarching issues or concerns would be helpful.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I have a question. If, for example, Ms. Townsend gave us a photo of the buffer. When I look at that buffer, it needs to be changed, I believe. So that being said, what is the quickest way to get it done? That we would not have to wait 24 months, 18 months? As other individuals have said, can we just, can we just read through the ordinance, redline, yellow line it, give it to you guys, you come back? What is the timetable? Can something like that be done in 30 days? And I'm just asking, because I really don't know. Can it be done in 30 days?
No, it can't be done in 30 days. And again, looking at, you know, our.
Can you tell me why not, so I can understand?
Yeah, I mean, one, it takes time to draft the changes and make sure that it doesn't conflict with the other existing ordinances. We've got legal advertising requirements prior to each public hearing, so, you know, we have to advertise within a certain timeframe for this. Any change that is favorably or unfavorably recommended here then has to go to the Board of Supervisors, so that's another month with more advertisements, so.
I do understand that process, but for me, when I heard, you know, the 18 to 24 months, that's what kind of raised my antennas, because if we see that there's a change, we come to you with the change, you guys look it over, could that be back in front of us in 30 days so that we can start the voting process?
So, the, when we really get into the nuts and bolts of it, the planning commission can make a recommendation to the board to direct staff to look at revising an ordinance. So just because it's brought up by planning commission, we're certainly happy to talk through things with you guys, but the ultimate direction has to come from the board.
Okay.
And again, kind of taking into account, outside of myself and Aiden, who's the administrative assistant, there's three planning staff members. So you have your daily site plan reviews, violations, customer interactions, things like that. And what's kind of landed us in the situation that we're in now is piecemealing the ordinance together, which is why we've, you know, received approval from the board, they've budgeted money for this comprehensive approach. So we want to try and stay away from the piecemeal approach when we. So, we want to try and stay away from the piecemeal approach when we have the money to comprehensively look at it and hopefully clean it up, provide clarity, and also take into account staff time that goes into all of this.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Just to clarify something for me, if we made a change now, wouldn't that change be subject to be redone during that process?
It would.
Yeah, and, and yeah, to reiterate, I don't believe we'd want to pepper the board of supervisors with changes and then, and then have to entertain another change based on recommendations of the, the vendor. And then we, of course, we'll visit that again ourselves. So, I don't want to, you know, be, you know, have duplicate efforts or repetitive efforts, I guess. Not to say we can't draw attention, I do agree with Ms. Townsend that, you know, and yourself as far as maybe the approach is, is that we can highlight what we feel is in need or, or, you know, whether you pick your top five, top ten or whatever. And I don't have a problem with, at our meetings that we, you know, when we do our commissioner reports and if you want to announce, you know, however briefly, what, what areas of the zoning ordinance that you're looking at. And again, to, you know, just give notice that this is of interest, at least, at least for us, and then we're always going to revisit it anyway because it has to come before us to go before, before it goes to the board. So, I, I am fine with the fact that if we want to, you know, individually, if something, if you have your, an eye on a particular part of the ordinance, if you want to bring it up and, and like, again, try to keep it somewhat brief, I think, I don't, I don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna try to litigate anything here, it's just, you know, this is what I'm interested in working on and, and pass that information on. In a general sense, is that seem okay with the rest of the commissioners?
One, one question to Mr. Arag, excuse me, Aragi. There has been no outline to prospective vendors as to the sequencing of the evaluation of the ordinances, correct?
Correct.
So... Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry.
We, I mean, we, the RFP more or less asks for their proposal on, you know, how are they going to manage the project? What's the timeline for completion? It'll look at past references and other projects that they've done. So, it's kind of up to them to propose kind of the structure and then obviously we'll review those proposals before selecting a vendor or consultant, you know, to, based on evaluation criteria to find the best value for the county.
It would seem prudent that maybe after the selection of the consultant, that maybe they would put up a schedule of events or what their sequence of evaluation for the various sections are? And then this commission could provide their input on those various sections at that time that it's present and being evaluated than doing it too far in advance. The reason I'm saying this is that the various sections of the ordinance intertwine with each other pretty tightly in some areas and loosely in others. So, a change over here could affect a change that is three or four months down if it's not taken into consideration adequately. So, that would be my, my only recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is that maybe wait, wait until the consultant has identified their sequence of events on the evaluation of the various sections of the ordinance.
Now, I think too that if, in the meantime, if anybody, again, I mean, we're all gonna, we all have our own pets, if you want to call it that, and, you know, obviously, we, we know, we know buffers is going to be a, yours, a strong point or your, your strongest argument is going to be related to, to buffers and then, you know, and me personally, I know that, that maybe the, in the most general sense, there's not enough definitionally, as far as, is the correct use of the word, in the zoning ordinance, because there was, to me, there's gaps, it's too many areas for interpretation. So, again, I don't think, I think some parts may be a little bit too vague as far as we're trying to define what this property is used for. I think it's a little bit too vague in some cases, it's very clear in others. So, that, to me, that's my pet peeve is I like to see better clarity that anybody, including, and again, make it readable, again, take out the legalese, I'm totally a fan of that, that any citizen can thumb through it and, even though they won't do it for fun, but, but they can at least maybe read and understand it. So, I think that's, readability is going to be important too, as far as some of my pet concerns, I guess, if you want to call it that. So, again, I don't believe there will be any harm and, and nothing's stopping anybody from, again, thumbing through the zoning ordinance to, to maybe search for these things that might be of interest or, or at least you want to draw attention to. You know, I know you're, I'm not gonna call it a crusade, but I understand your, your point, I know you want to, again, not only draw attention, but, you know, affect some change to what we've, you know, what we've experienced to this point. I think also part of it too is that, and it's a different side of the coin, is whatever we have in an ordinance, you know, technically, our local laws is, is the enforcement aspect of it. So, some, I think a lot of times we find maybe it's an enforcement failure, not blaming any current staff or anybody at all. Sometimes things will get missed, but also we need to make sure that staff has the support they need in enforcing what we think is the right way to go. So, I don't think I got you any more positions, but anyway, I'm... But, but again, as a local government employee myself, I do understand the, you know, the, sometimes having to work shorthanded or, and again, I know you, you as well, Ms. Townsend, can probably appreciate that too, but, so I think if we can support staff as much as we can to make sure that whatever we decide we want to do moving forward with these ordinances, that they can enforce it.
Well, I'll, I'll just say this. With my notes that I have now, I will continue to look at these and just pass the notes on to Mr. Silver so that he will have them in the future, because I need to put them down in writing before I forget them, because it, it's a lot of little, little things. So, I will continue that on my, my own and then just email him and then, when it comes time, then we can sit down and talk about it.
And I do not want to discourage you from mentioning in, in this public, because that, by mentioning it during this, I mean, it's putting it out there, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're concerned about. So, I, I don't, I don't want you to not broadcast what your concerns are, I do want you to do that. So, you know, I'm certainly going to encourage you to, whether it's during commissioner reports or if we even set aside a, a part of the meeting to just do that, then that's fine too.
Yeah, that's no problem for me.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so moving forward, if, if you have some, an area of concern, if you want to bring it up at the, certainly during your commissioner reports, then please do so. And then, and again, to any commissioner who wants to certainly delve into the zoning subdivision ordinances and all that and, and see what's there or draw from your experiences as far as what we, you feel didn't, hasn't worked or hasn't worked as well as it could have. So, certainly that's probably, ultimately should bear a goal anyway, at any given time, so, but we just, we'll just have an opportunity to make some changes when the vendor gets in place, so. And with that, Reverend Hathaway, any other comments?
No.
Dr. Schmidt?
I, I don't have any, but this October fourth, there's the West Point Crab Carnival. Y'all should come up to West Point to come to the Crab Carnival.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, I'm gonna put Mr. Aragi and Mr. Moyer on the spot here for a moment. Last Friday, there was about fifty-eight people in attendance for the housing roundtable that was held at Colonial Downs. And I got some stuff out of it, but I was unable to attend the roundtable discussion and I was hoping that Mr. Aragi or Mr. Moyer would give us a little information of what occurred in the roundtable discussion.
Let, let me put it this way, it never really got to a roundtable.
So, it was squared off.
It was, it was still question and answer, back and forth, and then a few comments and that, but it never got to a, to a, what, what they really wanted, and they never set it up that way, that with four or five people being in the front, you know, you taking questions, you know, from everybody. So, it never really got that way. But the, the one thing, I, I talked to Ren from Chamber of Commerce who was there and that, that the, the next time something like this would take place, we hopefully would have, be in more of a square or, you know, facing each other versus making comments to people that are behind me or in front of me or something like that, so. But your, your point about roundtable is we didn't get to that.
Okay.
So, there wasn't any real discussion on that, but...
Yeah, and that's accurate. Just to expand on that, we kind of ended the discussion with potentially reconvening spring of twenty-six, maybe early summer of twenty-six. You know, understanding again that the development ordinance rewrite will be ongoing and that may lead to some further questions, conversations that can be had. But that's really how it ended, was just kind of, this has been a great kind of introduction to everybody and, you know, the Williamsburg Association Area of Realtors, I think I got that right, Home Builders Association of Richmond, they were in attendance. So, I mean, it, you know, some of those potential stakeholders that we might engage with throughout the process were there, so I think it was a good, good event, good kind of introduction to everybody and certainly some potential for collaboration in the future.
And Mr. Aragi, do you know if the presentation material that they displayed is, do you know if that's available? Because I like to do some fact checking for myself on...
I'm not sure if Dr. Stafford's presentation is available from William &amp; Mary.
Yeah.
I know our presentation, I can get that to you.
I'm talking about Ms. uh, Ms. Stafford's.
I can see if I can get my hands on it.
Yeah.
I don't think that was sent around previously, but I will certainly follow up with the meeting organizer or discussion organizer to try and get that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rose?
Nothing else at this time, just a, I guess, a very, very quick comment on the, the idea of the, the process that we're gonna, we're gonna be undertaking and staff's gonna be undertaking is just the simple fact that we, we will have time and a lot, some of our meetings are not ver, are not very, are not, not going to be very long, so maybe we can use that time during the process to have some mi, like mini work sessions on, on a particular, on a particular area.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chairman. The, the Police Department along with Fire Rescue, it's holding a Faith and Blue, another meeting like they did last year, a kind of a service over at Quinton Elementary on Saturday, this Saturday between ten and twelve. It's a great, great time to get out and, and support our men and women in blue. The roundabout, I have a, a drawing of the roundabout right here, I'm sorry, I didn't make a copy of it, but also it's a ten million dollar project that we'll be spending somewhere around five million of our Central Virginia Transportation Authority money and possibly we can make it a regional project and maybe some of that five million would not necessarily be from our part of that. One comment about what we're talking about earlier about the rewrite and that, I just put down a little kind of saying, go through the county, see what you like and see what you don't like and write it down. You know, I can't, we, he can't, they can't change anything that's out there right now, okay? And once the rewrite's done, everything's going to be grandfathered. So, there's not a lot to be done. So, see what you like and what you don't like. We can't do much about the past, but we can definitely make sure the future is the way we want it. Hopefully, I believe there'll be a county attorney sitting in with us next year, next time. We're pretty close to announcing that and, let me see, that's EDA. Oh, one thing, the county has made a huge effort to be as transparent as possible. The Housing Advisory Committee minutes are online, our minutes, board supervisors' minutes, and also tho, those are also publicized, I mean, shown on streaming. Also, the EDA's minutes are online and the EDA, as, as the Housing Advisory Committee is able to be, gone to, you can go to any of those meetings. And so, I don't really know if we need any input from Facebook or places like that in what's occurring through the county as, as, as like it was gospel, because you can find out any of that information online, especially on the New Kent website. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Next meeting, October twentieth, six-thirty here in the boardroom. And with that, unless any other commissioners have any other comments to add, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
They're moved?
Staff reports, yes, sorry. Sorry about that. I was writing notes and I broke right past that, so, sorry. I'm still entertaining a, a motion for adjournment.
So, I'm moved.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend.